I realize we have people out in the lobby for the, still for the Planning and Development Hearings, but we tried to bring everybody in for the presentation, so hopefully we were, we managed to do that. This is the meeting of Tuesday, November the fourteenth at nine a.m. Our invocation this morning will be given by Pastor Eddie Stith, and the Pledge of Allegiance will follow by Bill Pickens. Please rise if you can.
Let us bow today. Father, we just thank you that on this Tuesday morning, that we can just gather in this place, and we can just discuss this great city and this great county that we live in. Father, I just pray that today, that as we have discussions and as we look at how we can make Putnam County better, Father, I pray that you would give everyone in this place patience, Father, that you would give them a resolve, that, Father, that we all have the same heart and the same desire to leave Putnam County for our children better than it is today. Father, I thank you that your face and your favor is upon this community, upon this county. Lord, I thank you for all the elected officials. I thank you for everyone who serves us day in and day out, our first responders. Father, I thank you for everyone in our community. I pray that you are blessed then with strength and favor today, for the best is yet to come. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor, and thank you Commissioner Pickens. The Chair will entertain a motion for approval of amendments on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the amendments stated in our packet for October tenth, 2023.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. We're going to recess the Board of County Commission meeting at this time, and we're going to convene the Port Authority meeting, and the Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the Port Authority amendments.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the Port Authority regular meeting, October tenth, 2023, as listed in our packet.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we're going to open the floor for public comment on port authority items. Port authority items. Seeing none, I'm going to ask Sam Sullivan to come forward and give us a port update.
Good morning Commissioners. We'll give you a brief update, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them afterwards. If you recall, a couple of years ago, Representative Payne had some legislation placed on the Florida statutes, Chapter three eleven, regarding port, the port of Putnam, and the possibility of getting inserted as an official port. One of those conditions was to have, apply for state funding, do a study, and then have that study reviewed by the Florida Seaport Transportation Economic Development Council, and have it approved. Following visits by the Florida Port Council and FDOT of our port, consensus was that going in, funding such a study would be, you know, irresponsible fiscally, because we already have the infrastructure and other things already in place. Furthermore, we developed a master plan that you all approved recently. As a result of that, FDOT Council that we do a, write a study in-house, which we did, it's part of your packet, and as a result of that and previous documentation composed in-house, EFSTAD on the October twenty-fifth reviewed the material, asked questions of Administrator Sucks and myself, and went ahead and approved, passed the resolution. We have met the conditions of that Florida statute. We are fully authorized port now in the state of Florida, and we are eligible for state seaport funding as a result, and we are permanently now on the EFSTAD Council and the Florida Ports Council. As dredging goes, thanks to the Sheriff's Office, Colonel Wells and Sheriff Deloach, we went and sounded some of the channels that the Corps is looking at. I'm probably going to be reaching out to Colonel Wells in the near future, once we get some additional coordinates, and we're going to be sounding some other channel access from Rice Creek. We do believe that the cubic yardage that would be dredged would go down from two hundred thousand to about thirty thousand cubic yards, which would make our cost for dredging considerably less. We also think that that sounding would indicate that we could possibly, at this time, once we feel that the infrastructure that we have is safe for docking by commercial vessels and loading and unloading, that we could commence commercial traffic of smaller sizes prior to the raising of the Shands Bridge, which is still scheduled for 2030. The Corps is still moving forward with their studies, and should be submitting their tentatively scheduled plan to their headquarters in March of 2024, which would be the final step before the authorization of the dredging project. Finally, the PIT grant is still in process. As you know, Congress is having some situations presently, and that is delaying anything that could happen over Department of Transportation. We are at the last step before we have a grand agreement, but that is on hold until Congress resolves its issues. And that is the summation of my report. I will entertain any questions at this time.
Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sam, thank you for all your hard work, and thanks to our administration for that. You know, Putnam County had a port, I don't know when it started, but it was back, long, long time ago, back in the fifties, sixties, and this is going to be great for Putnam County. We're not bringing big tankers in here and things in that nature, but it's going to really help our economy out tremendously. We talk about dredging. How many feet are we going to dredge? Because it's not going to be that big. I don't want the audience to think we're going to be...
We're looking at twelve plus one, which would allow us to bring in commercial barge vessels.
Okay, good deal, good deal. And for those of you in the audience that don't know where our port is, it's on seventeen out there, where Lafarge is, where they build actual bridges at, so...
Veritas Steel.
Veritas Steel, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. So it's going to be good for us, and we've already invested in that area, and we bought the George Pacific property there, so I think that's going to be good. When you look at the Outer Beltway being seventeen minutes away from that location, it's really going to move goods and services in and out of Putnam County and bring tremendous economic development. And for those of you, the river was the transportation highway back many, 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 many years ago, and we're going to hear about that book a little, a little bit later on, but truly, it's really exciting to see what's going to happen here in Putnam County along that waterway. So thank you very much for all your hard work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams, Zach.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the work you're doing, Sam, and I do appreciate that we are moving forward with considering utilizing the port prior to the ten-year plan, or it scared the crap out of me, to be quite honest with you, so that we'll be able to utilize it sooner than later, and that we have some plans in place, and we're going towards that, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other questions for Mr. Sullivan at this time? Thank you, Sam. We appreciate your hard work. Okay, I'll open the floor for general discussion by Commissioners on port authority items. Okay, hearing none, I'll close general discussion, and we will adjourn the Port Authority meeting and reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting, and we'll move into presentations, number AA on the list, which will be read by Commissioner Pickens. Is anybody from Haven Hospice here this morning? Would you come to the podium, please? Commissioner Pickens.
Okay, thank you Chairman Turner. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2023-140, National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, November 2023. Whereas for more than forty years, Haven has helped with, provide comfort and dignity to thousands of people in North Florida, allowing them to live their last months, weeks or days, comfortably with the people they love. Whereas Haven utilizes enter-to-disciplinary, team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. Where beyond providing physical treatment, Haven attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs, and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. Whereas Haven provides community-based palliative care, which delivers expertise to improve quality of life and relief from pain, and can be provided at any time during an illness. And whereas increasingly fragmented and broken health care system, hospice is one of the few sectors that demonstrates how health care can and should and work at its best for its patients. Whereas every year, 1.5 million Americans living in life-limiting illnesses and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States, including Haven. Whereas Haven is advocate and educator about advanced care planning, and it helps individuals make decisions about the care they want. Where the Centers for Medical and Medicaid Services have pledged to put patients first in all of its programs, including hospice, ensuring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patient choice, and access to individualized services based on the patient's unique care needs and wishes. Now therefore, I resolve that I, Robert Pickens, by virtue of authority vested in me by Putnam County, do hereby proclaim November twenty-three, 2023, as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of the care at the end of life, discuss their end-of-life wishes with their families, and observe this month's with appropriate activities and programs. Mr. Chairman, I approve that we adopt this proclamation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Yes, please. I'll have to move this down a little bit. So I'm solo today because my, my partner, Danny, is no longer with us, so get to do this by myself, so I'm going to need to find a new partner, but I just want to thank you all for always allowing us to come and receive this proclamation every year. So we're approaching some very exciting times at Haven, starting in 2024. We will be celebrating forty-five years in Putnam County, so we're going to be the longest standing hospice here in Putnam County for forty-five years, starting next year. So we just want to thank you, thank Putnam County for allowing us to, you know, take care of the residents here, and for you guys always being so gracious and letting us come and do this, so, thank you.
Come up for a picture.
Next, we'd like to ask everybody that's here with One Book, One Putnam to come forward. All you guys sat on the back row.
One Book, One Putnam, 2024, Putnam County Read, A Land Remembered by Patrick D. Smith. Whereas reading is an important activity for all of the residents of Putnam County, and whereas less than half of the adult population of Putnam County now reads literature, the Board of Commissioners wishes to encourage all of the county's residents, both young and old, to read. And whereas reading is one way to create bonds with family and among friends and neighbors, we want to get everyone in the community, from high school youth and office workers, to public officials and senior citizens, to read and discuss a great book together. And whereas One Book, One Putnam is encouraging all residents to read Patrick D. Smith's A Land Remembered, the Tebow Prize-winning book for most outstanding Florida historical novel about the triumphs and hardships of life in Old Florida. And whereas this program aims to revive literary reading in Putnam County, therefore, in support of this goal, there will be book discussions, community activities, and knowledgeable speakers. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners knows the residents of Putnam County will benefit and learn from reading this book, and whereas One Book, One Putnam is celebrating twenty years of encouraging reading throughout Putnam County. Now therefore, we proclaim that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners does hereby support learning through reading as promoted by One Book, One Putnam, and proclaims January and February of 2024 as the One Book, One Putnam County Read Months. Done, ordered, and adopted this fourteenth day of November. Mr. Chair, I move approval of Proclamation Number 2023-141.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Now I know somebody's going to speak. I know the group.
Good morning to each of you.
You're not going to keep, you're not going to keep Stephen from speaking, I know that. You could, you could go first, Ms. Stella, but I guarantee you Stephen's going to say something.
I just want to recognize and thank each and every one for their support monetary, as well as participating in the programs throughout Putnam County. This is the first book that they started reading, and so we're back at it again. We do have the book in multiple formats. We have the children's versions, we have it on CD, large print, and regular print. So please, all of the books have been delivered as I'm speaking, so if anybody is waiting to read the book, the book should be at the locations by now. Thank you.
Mr. Turner, you know you, me very well. I appreciate your, the opportunity to speak today for just a minute on behalf of One Book, One Putnam. I have probably done, been the mouthpiece of One Book, One Putnam for almost all of those twenty years, so it is exciting to be here once again to talk about something that is so important, and that is reading. Reading in this day and age is becoming a lost art, and anything we can do to encourage folks to read beyond that which they have to do for their everyday life, it's just really important. It's important for families to read together. The influence that fathers and mothers have on young children, reading is just immeasurable. Go out and read. I need to acknowledge all of the folks behind me who are members of the One Book, One Putnam, and specifically, this time to honor Bob Lee, who has been our chairman for the last several years, who is leaving the committee at the end of this year. We would not be what we are if it weren't for Bob's leadership, so Bob, we appreciate you no end.
Well, thank you. It's been very enjoyable.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you who year after year after year have supported One Book, One Putnam in many, many ways. As everybody knows, we are a completely volunteer organization. We get no direct funds, although we would love a few thousand dollars from you. We know we get no direct funding from the commission, although we get a lot of in-kind support from the library system, and again, we would not be able to do that without the support of Stella and Misha, and Stella's willingness to say, okay, they're a crazy group of people, but we're willing to do that anyway. So just thank you all very much. There'll be more information. Our kickoff is coming up in early January, and A Land Remembered is very special to us because it is the beginning. We started with this book, and we felt that to celebrate twenty years, it was time to go back to it. And there are tons of people who live here who think that Florida started when Disney moved to Orlando, and Florida's history is so rich and so vast, and Disney is just such a small part of that great history, that A Land Remembered captures that history of Florida very well. So I would urge new people to read A Land Remembered. So Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, thank you so very much for your support over the years.
Mr. Chairman, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to give a brief comment. When I got appointed by Governor Scott, my wife said, make sure you fund libraries. Very important, and Miss Stella, you know, she goes and checks out armloads at a time, and she reads a book like this all the time. High school librarian told me, I got a book I want you to read. I said, I've never read a book cover to cover in my whole life. Have you heard me tell this story? I said, how many pages? She told me, I said, it's going to take me a year or two to read that book. I'm just not that guy. It took me two and a half days, right at three days. I couldn't put the book down. I would walk through the house reading the book. I would, I mean, almost in the shower, you know, reading the book. Amazing book. And it did, it brought, it brought me back to when I grew up in the scrub, hunting and fishing, and bathing in the Aqua Waha, and as a young boy, learning to drive the stick shift truck, and just having a ball. And it reminded me so much about that. So I would encourage all of our listening audience to get this book, be a part of that. And while I still have the microphone, I need to give kudos. Commissioner Libley, you're here today, thank you for being in attendance. You, you helped me immensely when I first got here, and you know the struggles we went through, but you were always a gracious gentleman, and I appreciate that. And Yvonne Parrish, you taught me one thing that I still do every time. Read the packet. Remember you said that? Read the packet. So I'll never forget, when I sit down and read my packet, you're the one who said, read that packet, so and I do. Thank you for so much, okay? Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Read the packet and ask questions. Okay. Thank you for coming today. If y'all would like to come forward and we'll get a picture. Okay, we're going to, uh, move down the list and presentations to the, uh, Florida Parks and Recreation, uh, Florahome Parks and Recreation, if y'all want to come forward.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. Uh, as most of you know, a few years ago, um, Mary Lynn came before the Recreation Advisory Board, and then before the Board of County Commissioners, and, uh, they had a building out there that was on county property that she wanted to partner with us to restore, and we thought she was kinda crazy there at first. But since then, uh, she showed the, she showed us the vision of what could be accomplished, and, uh, so the Board of County Comis-, uh, Board of County Commissioners partnered with her. Um, we came together and partnered with her, and it was a, a, a great example of a private-public partnership. Um, they did most of the heavy lifting, uh, but you guys were part of this, and they want to express their appreciation today.
Thank you, Kevin. Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning to y'all. Uh, I am really, really proud to be here this morning, and I'm not asking for anything. I'm here to report the progress that we made on a really important project to the Florahome community. We can, have finally completed the restoration of Florahome's historic Palmetto Hall, and we couldn't be more happy. Uh, the building turned a hundred years old this year, so it was a perfect time to celebrate its completion. Uh, just a little bit of history, the building was built by the Village Improvement Association, which was an early women's club, uh, group. It was built in nineteen twenty-three, and the building cost a hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents to complete, and we know that because we have the minutes from the organization. It's not a fancy building, it's humble, it's a frame vernacular, a perfect Florida building with heart pine floors and cypress walls. Um, it's a beautiful, beautiful example of Florida architecture. The building stood as the heart of our community all this time. It served as our library. Of course, the women met at the, uh, building. It also was our first fire department, and basically where all of our important social and community events, uh, took place from. Uh, in November of twenty nineteen, I came before you all and asked permission to restore the building. It was in a very bad condition, it was, probably had not been used for about thirty years, it was boarded up. Uh, but we really wanted to try to save the building. So with your permission, uh, we moved forward. Who would have dreamt, though, that four months following your permission, we would have been shut down with a global pandemic? And with that came a lot of problems for us, uh, both financially and in the cha- chain supply end of things, as we had to restore the building. So it really was a labor of love, and an example of, I think I can, I think I can, and finally, that we did. Uh, we received our first permit in May of twenty twenty to restore the building, and then about three years later, we completed it officially in August of twenty twenty-three. Uh, we want to thank the, the volunteers and the donors. Without those folks, the buil-, the building would not have been restored. Uh, we've logged over two thousand volunteer hours, we had three hundred local donations, we were very lucky to have the support of the business community, many, many local businesses contributed, uh, very graciously, and, uh, with either a financial gift or in-kind contributions. Uh, we do have a plaque in the building permanently placed to honor those folks that were responsible. Um, it was a true community effort for us to raise the dollars, and I'm here to tell you that we raised a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a small community group, and that does not count, uh, the contribution made by the board to assist in that effort. So we had anticipated the building would have cost about a hundred and twenty to restore, but it ended up being a bit more than that. We recently had two very nice celebrations, a gala, uh, one evening with jazz music and nice food to honor those people that helped us. And then we had an official ribbon cutting for the community, uh, which was well-attended, and we were so great, grateful to open the building and show the building. It, it really is beautiful, and a tribute to our town's history and, uh, to our effort, uh, to complete the building. Um, I, on behalf of Florahome Park and Heritage Association, I really want to thank you all sincerely for the trust you bestowed upon our organization. I mean, I'm sure a lot of people come up before you and ask for all sorts of things, but it really was a leap of faith, uh, in this case. And we have really had a fantastic partnership between the county. If we work in isolation, we don't accomplish very much, but by working together, government, business, and community groups, we truly can accomplish a great deal of, uh, of things. Uh, we earned, we have earned, we, we formed in twenty seventeen with a mission to preserve our park and to, uh, enhance what was there, and really what was falling down. So since twenty seventeen, we've spearheaded about three hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements. We have a beautiful pavilion, we redid the ballpark buildings, we redid the pickleball court, the county helped us redoing our basketball court, um, we expanded the children's playground, and then this final project, which was a big one, to restore the building. Um, our, we look forward to the future, uh, to preserving our history, to improving our park, uh, bringing the building into use by the community to unite our community. And we especially look forward to a continuing relationship with county government. Uh, to commemorate the completion of the building and one hundred years of history, we created a commemorative coin to honor the women who built the building and the one hundred years of history. So we would like to, as a gift, give each of you all a commemorative coin, and if you'd please en- ensure that the constitutional officers receive one as well, we would be very grateful. Uh, this is Melinda Sturdovan, and she's one of our directors. So Melinda, if you could present this, please, uh, to the chair. But we just want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts, uh, for believing in us and allowing us to save a part of our history. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just really want to say kudos to Mary Lynn. Mary Lynn, you, um, retired from school.
Yeah.
Teaching culinary arts.
Right.
And went right to work in your neighborhood and the parks. And you've been working in your neighborhood for your whole lifetime. I remember when we served on the zoning board together back when we were very young, you know? Uh, or at least, I was very young, and you taught me a lot of good things I needed to know. But you know, you, you went to work, and your work was your bond, and you made it happen, and you gathered all the, the players with you and all the team, and you're right, there's a lot of times that people come up here, and they'll stand there where you are, and they'll say, I pay taxes and I want something. But you didn't do that. You said, would you partner with us to make this vision happen? I was skeptical at first, you heard me. I thought, oh, that's an old boarded-up building? Ugh, I don't see how this is going to change a whole lot. But with love and the right person, y'all made it happen, your group made it happen. And it was such an honor and a pleasure to be there for the grand opening and the night of the gala night. It was just to think about what took place a hundred years ago, and what's gonna be happening this hundred years, and what's gonna happen a hundred years from now, when that building's still there, hopefully, and somebody else is sta- standing where you are and sitting where I am, or us, you know, and what's gonna take place then. So I just really want to say from the bottom of my heart, it's been an honor and a joy to always serve with you for all the years we've done it, and you've never disappointed me. Thank you.
Thank you kindly, Larry. That means a lot to me.
Mr. Pickens.
Those comments are hard to follow, but let's see if I can do that. Mary Lynn, I want to thank you, but I want to thank Kevin and his staff, and, and our staff, and the Board of County Commissioners for, uh, for teaming with you. And you had a vision and a dream, and as Parks and Rec's chairperson, I, um, really, when I saw the first pictures of that building, I go, oh my goodness, what have we done? And then I think it was moved forward, and you opened it up and found different things. I go, ooh, we may have made a mistake here. But I was truly honored to be able to be part of this, and also to be part of the ribbon cutting. And I'm telling everyone in here, if you haven't been out to this facility, you need to go because it is worth it. What they have done, it absolutely is beautiful. They brought it back, I would truly believe, in the, in the condition that it was built in a hundred years ago. It's very nicely done, and it will be a, an asset to that community for years to come. So thank you very much for you and your team, and all the people that partnered, um, in that community to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. We will be open each Saturday from ten to two, so please stop by, and of course, the building will be open for special events. We're trying right now to figure out what we want the building to be used for, how we'll go for with, with community classes and lectures, his, on history and on nature and musical activities. So we're trying to put that part of the puzzle together as we speak. Thank you again.
Would you like a picture, Mary Lynn?
Sure. You want a picture? I'm not sure the audience wants another picture.
One, two, three. All right.
We're going to, uh, move into the planning and development, uh, public hearings. Um, the first case this morning is going to be the PUD twenty-three dash oh six, which is the RV park out on one hundred. The second one listed on the agenda is the East Palaca PUD, which is the one at the corner of East River Road and Putnam County Boulevard. Now, I'm trying to do this as a consideration to the people that are here this morning, to where they won't have to sit here all morning and go through the other cases. We're going to, I'm going to tell you that we are not gonna hear that case until twelve thirty. So that gives you the opportunity to stay here and be with us, I'm not trying to run you off, or you can leave and come back to twelve thirty. If some, something was to happen that we get done before twelve thirty with the first zoning case, we will do the two text amendment cases like we did last time, waiting on, um, waiting on the people to get in. So, and we will not hear this case until twelve thirty. So that gives you the opportunity to stay with us and join us, or to come back at twelve thirty. If I was sitting in the office, in the audience, I would appreciate the fact that I didn't have to sit here and wonder what time that next case was gonna start. So hopefully, I don't upset anybody, 'cause that's not the intent here. I'm trying to make it convenient for the ones that don't want to sit here all morning, is that we will not hear that case until twelve thirty or sometime thereafter, if we're not done with the other zoning cases before then, this other zoning case before then. So, excuse me?
Which case? What are you talking about?
I'm talking about the, the case in, at East Palaca, over there at the corner of East River Road and Putnam County Boulevard.
So you are gonna hear it at the R V park?
Right now, yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Right now. But, but the second case on the agenda is the one in East Palaca, and I'm just trying to make it convenient for the people here that we're not gonna hear that until twelve thirty or sometime thereafter. So it's up to you, stay with us, or whatever you want to do, so.
Can we have a break for three minutes?
Yeah, and with that, we're gonna take a three-minute recess. And with that, we're going to take a three-minute recess. Okay, I'm going to ask the Commissioners at this time, do y'all actually want to hear the staff presentation a second time?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. Your question is, do we want to hear the staff's recommendation again? I think all I want to hear is what's been updated since the last time, and that's how this Commissioner feels. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are you prepared to do that, Zach? Just give us any updates of things that may have changed between last time and this time?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, good. Thank you. Please proceed.
All right, for the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. This is an abbreviated presentation on the PUD 230006. I have in my hands the revised development agreement that I shared with County Commission yesterday afternoon when it was received. And I'm going to go through to each article and section and just read you the strike through and underline as applicable. So, in Article 4, Section 4.4, in reference to sanitary septic, the applicant has stricken the request of a waiver for a lift station. Article 4, Section 4.5, Transportation, the applicant has added the following language: "In accordance with Florida Department of Transportation approval and regulations, an extended paved driveway entrance minimum of 100 feet off of State Road 100 will be provided to assist with safer entry and exits. The entrance driveway will be a minimum allowable width per FDOT requirements." And finally, Article 4, we have a new section, 4.15, defining quiet hours. Park quiet hours will be no later than 10:00 PM on Sunday through Thursday and 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday, no earlier than 7:00 AM each morning. That's all?
Is there anything at this time for questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward or the agent?
Good morning. For your record, again, Don Holmes of the Firm of Holmes &amp; Young, PA at 222 North 3rd Street, Palatka. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is Forever Rescued LLC. That is the actual owner of the property. First of all, I'll thank you again for the time that you take to hear these cases. I understand very well that they're not easy and they're not sometimes easy to listen to with the difficult choices that are before you. And land use always seems to bring out difficult choices. Secondly, I'm going to hope to relieve a little bit of your anxiety by telling you that it is not our intent in any way, shape, or form to repeat verbatim everything that was said by us, the applicants, in the first hearing. We'll touch upon a couple of things, but it's only been a couple of weeks. That hearing and that testimony and that presentation is of record. I would, however, ask you to please question and ask if there's some aspect of that first presentation that in thinking about it or in considering it over the last couple of weeks, you now have questions about, even if you didn't then have questions. I'd like to start by mentioning that, what you all know. And that is, this is an application for a planned unit development. My client's prepared to sort of present the slide presentation that she presented last time. If, and I guess I'm going to ask for some participation from you, if any of you don't recall the nature, purpose, or concept of her proposal, then we're happy to run through it real quickly. And otherwise, again, we're not going to take your time. It was presented of record at the last hearing. Does anybody want to see it again quickly?
She also sent it to us, I think it was yesterday.
Okay, great. So, sometimes when we, when we enter these hearings, which we do all the time, you do probably twice a month, have done for a long, long time, some things, some terms, some aspects of what we're doing, we sort of take for granted, but they're also pushed kind of towards the back of our minds as we go forward and go through the process. My client is proposing a unique brand of activity land use, featuring RV sites, featuring glamping, and featuring primitive camping with some ancillary activities and with a unique feature that she has direct access to the trail that spans from, will ultimately span from Lake Butler to San Augustine. It does involve a mix of some uses, a mix of some, some activities. And that has been criticized by some. But let me, if I could, emphasize something that I think is really significant, and that is, it's exactly the kind of use that your code makes specific and special provisions for. Your code in defining a PUD, and I'm just taking certain sections of it which kind of hit the essence of the matter, states that a PUD district, a Planned Unit Development District, is to provide a method for landowners or developers to submit unique proposals, which may not be provided for or allowed in other zoning districts otherwise established by the code, uses with unique design features, which might otherwise not be allowed in one or other listed districts, but that otherwise conform to the Putnam County Comprehensive Code. And then later, it maybe defines it and explains it a little bit better, "PUD provisions are intended to promote flexibility of design and integration of uses and structures, while at the same time retaining in the Board of County Commissioners the absolute authority to establish limitations and regulations their own for the benefit of the public health, welfare, and safety." Many people don't understand, or maybe they take it for granted or gloss over the fact that a PUD, a Planned Unit Development, is actually the most restrictive form of zoning that you have. If, if an entity, like my client right now, she has ag zoning. There are a myriad of different uses that your code allows as a permissible use without approval from your agency for a lot of different things: livestock, all kinds of agricultural activities, things that are minor, might not be offensive. And you don't have any control over it, so long as she meets minimum setbacks and noise ordinance and things like that. You don't control it. But PUD, which has sometimes been referred to by some, accurately or not, is the closest thing we have to contract zoning, because you know contract zoning is not allowed by law. But a PUD is, in my estimation, the closest thing we do have to contract zoning because that development agreement that Mr. Baker referenced tells you what she can do and what she can't do. And it's a negotiable instrument. It is an agreement between her and the county. It is enforceable. And unlike a comment that was made at the last hearing, if for whatever reason she can't do what's there, she has two choices: walk away, in which case after a time, this property reverts back to the zoning and held before the PUD, or else do what she has to do to comply, or else come before you again in a public hearing in this process and ask for changes. It is not carte blanche to do what you want to, as long as it looks something like what she described. It's just not. So, what she described, of course, is an activity that she's explained in some, in some detail. What we've attempted to do at the last hearing was bring some folks in from a practical and maybe anecdotal standpoint to tell you firsthand that some of the fears that people have voiced, they haven't materialized in the past. And I'm not going to try to speak to or mention everybody who spoke before, but I will mention Mr. Valentine because that was particularly interesting to me. And I've talked to Keith before. I know that when Keith proposed his RV park... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not used to people not being able to hear me. Matter of fact, I'm just the opposite. But nonetheless, when he first, when he first sought PUD approval for his RV park, which has many more neighbors, much closer than my client's, the opposition was, was large. He was successful. He instituted the PUD. He instituted the RV park. And when he came back subsequently for a modification, and I honestly don't know what the modification was, but he came back for a modification because he, again, was bound by that first PUD agreement. He couldn't change it unless you modified it. He had no opposition. Because after he had been in place for a while and people had seen that, their worst fears, their worst imaginable fears, the worst fears that the internet could conjure up, they just weren't there. And then, of course, the second speaker that was interesting to me was the other gentleman who had the RV park, who talked about the lack of problems. And quite frankly, I don't know that I need to spend a lot of time on that one. I heard someone say that RV parks are basically breeding grounds for crime and they house sex offenders and sexual predators. I guess I was a little bit speechless. I mean, that, that comment almost deserves no response at all. But we presented those, and then what we, what we suggested to you was this. And your staff report suggests this also. There are features of this PUD that we don't have the expertise to tell you, to outline for you right now. So, of the changes that Mr. Baker mentioned, the one was eliminating the request for a waiver of the lift station. And the reason that was done, quite frankly, was because we understood and realized that ultimately, it's going to be for the DOAH to decide what she has to have out there to handle the waste. It would be unfair to ask you, and I'm not sure your waiver would be binding anyway, but I don't consider myself to be an expert in, in waste disposal systems. I don't know if any of you are, but the Health Department is. And so, rather than us asking you for a waiver, we, we listened, we tried to listen as we've gone through this to relevant comments, and we said, "Okay, let's take that out. Whatever the Health Department says we have to do, we have to do." So, that waiver is no longer a part of the request. And similarly, it was brought to our attention that perhaps not having, she was trying to eliminate as much pavement, eliminate as much pavement on site as she could eliminate for purposes of keeping the area, the 20 acres as natural as is possible. But it was suggested to us that not having a paved entrance leading from Highway 100 would probably produce a slowdown of folks trying to enter into the park. Because even if it was a stable surface, so as you approach asphalt and you see limestone or whatever, crushed rock, folks, especially folks driving an RV, are probably going to anticipate a bump and slow down and make that turn even slower than they might otherwise. So, it was seen as a safety issue and she modified in order to allow for that, assuming DOT and everyone that has control of that allows. And then, of course, there are other issues that are left to others to figure out, like the exact requirements for the road. We, she has done due diligence. For instance, people talked about all of the threatened species that she was going to be impacting and damaging. I don't know if they did, but my client had a Threatened Species Survey and Report prepared by a recognized legitimate firm to determine what threatened species were found on site that she might be impacting. The only one that was referenced was gopher tortoises. They found two burrows. And they noted that if she develops within 25 feet, she'll have to go through the proper process of relocating those burrows. My point simply is, she's attempted to perform her due diligence by looking into these things that might be a problem. And the end result was, as staff has indicated in its staff report, those details, we suggest, should be left to those with expertise to handle them. This, her getting through the County Commission level is not the end of her journey. As you all know, she has to go to the Development Review Committee. She has to have approval by various state agencies. And at any one of those levels, if there's something she can't meet, any standard, any rule that's designed for the protection of the public in general, then basically, she's going to have to alter her plan or stop. So, having said all that, the only other issue I'll mention quickly was the quiet hours. We have a map, I think it's in your packet, that shows that, I was a little confused and I asked my client to go back because I think about 30 people stood up last, at the last hearing and said they lived across the street from her. And I've been out there and I've looked for the housing project across the street from her and I didn't, I didn't see it. So, she, that next map you have there has a V for vacant property and it has actual distances to the, the closest house to her property line. It ranges from one football field to three. That, that distance does. And of course, one of those is someone who spoke in favor of her, of her project at the last meeting. But nonetheless, and she never intended not to do this, she was, she just had a little bit of confusion as to how much detail she should put in that development agreement. But since noise kept, we kept hearing about noise, she put the quiet hours in there as an enforceable term of the agreement. So that not only won't there be noise that exceeds a certain level because you've got your own ordinance, as you know, that controls the amount of noise, but there won't be any noise other than, you know, routine things like doors shutting and people talking, except or outside of those hours that the agreement would allow. So, with all that having been said, we would revert back to the fact that my client's application was considered by your, your staff, and your staff considered your code. And your code defines what a PUD is for and what must be shown in a PUD application. your code defines what a PUD is for and what must be shown in a PUD application in order to gain approval. And your staff considered those in a written document, and without going into great detail, and subject to the understanding that we all have that certain of the technical items, certain other technical items will have to be addressed by those agencies with jurisdiction and expertise, your staff concluded this: that this proposed PUD, this planned unit development proposal, was compatible with existing land uses in the area, consistent with the requirements of PUD zoning, which are separate little six criteria set, consistent with the future land use designation, and consistent with other comprehensive plan goals, objectives, and policies, and accordingly they recommended approval. Without belaboring the point, it's simply our position that the application that was submitted met your code requirements. My client has tried to be responsive to those issues that she heard, that she thought might in some fashion make her project offensive or even to some extent aggravating. And at this point, we're going to be asking, and we would ask respectfully, that you approve the planned unit development as it has been presented. If you have questions, as I said, we're happy to answer any that we can, and my client is here in person to answer anything that I can't.
Any questions of the applicant, the agent at this point?
I do. There's a lot of things that she's asking for, you know, besides the RV sites, the glamping sites, primitive camping, you know, you're talking about office space, you're talking about beer and wine sales. Live music. Can somebody define live music to me? Because this has been an issue in my district with amplified sound, and it's really hard to control. It's hard to police. So can somebody explain? Because sitting around a campfire playing an acoustical guitar is one thing, but when you have a wedding event and have a five-band there with horns, that's a little different situation there. And noise travels. I live on the river, and the complaints I have are places that have been approved by this county. They met the PUD. They do things right, but there's still the complaints of amplified sound going down the riverside. I would assume it's going to travel through the woods in that very rural area. So can you explain that to me? Because that is a definite concern of mine.
Yes, sir. Appreciate the question.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. We do appreciate the question, and I'm actually happy to speak to the commission as well as everyone here about that. The intention is not to be a live music bar, anything of that nature. The intention is if we want to support a local musician, for example, which would be more like an acoustical guitar or something, or if we want to have an occasional live event to do a community give back. We've experienced some tragedies here within our community just as of recent. So that would be an exception type of an event, that we would have live music and potentially have the beer and wine sales to give those proceeds back. If we want to put some sort of limitation on the amplified sound, I am more than happy to do that. This is not like we're going to have live music every night of the week or even every weekend. We may have weddings out there in the future, so I do want to have the opportunity for someone to be able to, you know, have music there for their actual wedding, but that would be within quiet hours and within all the sound ordinances.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there any other questions or concerns, or would you like, would it be helpful if we put some sort of restriction on the amplified noise around weekdays or something?
I would think if this does move forward, that I will request something like that be addressed, because I just, you know, they won't be calling this commissioner. They'll be calling another commissioner, you know, about that.
Yes, sir.
I understand that, you know, providing all those services, it just, the live music can really just add, you know, a negative, a negative thing to this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant or the applicant agent at this time? Okay. With that, we're going to move into public comment. I'm going to ask everybody that they keep their comments to three minutes or less. If you testified at the last hearing, you're welcome to testify again. I'd appreciate it that if you have something to add, that you would do that. If you want to say the same thing, you're welcome to do that too, but we heard you last time, so it's up to you. Also, do you have any more? Okay. So somebody gave me a stack of papers here, and somebody numbered when they wanted them to speak. So I don't know who did the numbering or whatever. What about all these right here? Do you think you're going to get to pick when they speak too? It's not up to you to decide what order that you want to go in here. I mean, if somebody wants to go first, raise your hand, and I'll find your card and let you go first. But that sets a precedence up here that makes it very difficult for future cases to come before this board, when a group of people can get up and decide who gets to speak and what they're going to say and what have you. So the, we're going to, I'm going to try to call them and order the best I can. If, yes, sir, you want to go first?
No, sir. I was just wanting to comment to the numbering on there. It wasn't about that group being first. You can go through the whole stack in your other hand first. It was the, it was the group that lives closest to it had a desire to sequence the people that were talking. So it wasn't being number one, it was just the sequence of speakers.
Okay. First one on the list is Angie Stanley. If you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Angie Stanley. I live at 130 South Jasmine Avenue in Melrose, Florida. I'm a Putnam County resident. I live with my husband and children on a Florida century pioneer family farm in a two-story farmhouse that was built by my husband's grandfather. His homestead is very, very near to the proposed RV park project. Over the past several decades, we have spent much time, effort, and resources creating a family life of agriculture that we have always dreamed of. Working this land has taught our children and grandchildren what hard work and preservation of nature means. This quiet rural agricultural lifestyle is something we would like to preserve for generations to come. Ms. Ledford's dream of creating a public RV park and campground in the middle of a community of properties and families that have all dreamed of rural farm life is just plain wrong. Myself and my neighbors have had this dream of living this lifestyle for decades. Why should her dream crush my dreams and dozens of my neighbors' dreams? This project is just, does not fit in this area. Commissioners, I thank you for listening and for your listening ears and your time today and what my neighbors have to say about this. Would you want an RV park or campground literally in your front or backyard? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, wait a minute. All right, now I'm going to tell you right now, all this is going to do is make it last longer, so it's not going to impress or unimpress anybody. So I'd appreciate it if we didn't turn this into a circus this morning if we could. Next is Brian Stanley.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time.
Morning.
I'm passing out a letter that you've already received as an email from County Commissioner in Clay County, Spetsy Condon. My wife just spoke in reference to our homestead and our farm. Our family farm is unique in that it crosses over Putnam County and Clay County lines. So even though Mr. Harvey is my Commissioner in Putnam County, and I vote in Putnam County, Ms. Condon is my Commissioner in Clay County. The letter that you have, I'm not going to read it in its entirety. You have it as an email, and you have it in your hand. I'll highlight some points of that that I'd like to address. While I understand fully support and control of local authority in this action, I want to ask you to please deny this application. I have several concerns with the proposed development of this property. The first is that I believe it is incompatible with the surrounding properties, including those located in my district of Clay County. These are agricultural properties with working farms. The second concern is a little bit more complicated, but just as important for environmental protection. I have heard the proposal compared with the Keystone Heights RV Park located in neighboring Bradford County. This is not a good comparison. Bradford County required the property owners to extend water and sewer services to their property, and they are in full compliance with this. Also, this property does not border any working farms. It borders swamp, pine forests, and has no residential occupancy. I'm sure you're fully aware of the recent Senate Bill 1632, as well as several other environmental protection statutes addressing how counties manage septic tanks located within a basin management action plan within the jurisdiction. As both counties are located in the Lower St. John's River Basin Management Action Plan, I'm very concerned with the addition of this commercial property and the proposal to add that many septic tanks, especially given the size of the property and the pond location. Again, I respect your authority and local control. It certainly is a unique position, given the shared county boundaries with the property. I appreciate your consideration of my opinion. That letter is from Mrs. Condon, who is from Clay County and represents the Clay County constituents. In October 24th, Clay County unanimously declined a proposed rezoning of a residential agricultural property only 1.2 miles west on State Road 100 from this project that you're now hearing about. The sole reason that they declined the rezoning of that piece of property was the comprehensive land use surrounding that commercial property. That's their reasons, and they listened to their constituents. They listened to the constituents that lived around that proposal, and they declined to rezone that piece of property for those reasons. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Mr. George Owen? Mr. Owen? If you would state your name and address for the record, please, Mr. Owen.
Yes, sir. George Owen, 1771 State Road 100, Melrose, Florida. I'll try to walk and chew bubble gum at the same time here. See if those come on. Maybe? All right. I want to cover today Putnam County Comprehensive Plan 2035. Goal A1: Maintain and Manage the County's Natural Resources and Quality of Life. Establish a pattern of development that is harmonious with the county's natural environment, supports the rural and agricultural nature of the county while providing a desired lifestyle for county residents. The owners that bought these tracts of land in this area wanted a rural and agricultural style of life. They did not expect a trailer park to be their next-door neighbor. The photos I've submitted to you are what the owners see each day if you approve this area. Instead of them having sprawling pastures, they will look out their windows and see a business, whether it's a convenience store, a dollar store, or a trailer park. I would not want to see this out my window every day when I have coffee. Policy A143: Residential Commercial Industries shall not be permitted as a mixed-use and agricultural area, where such uses will be adversely impacted on the agricultural productivity of the area. And then it says, for example, "Community reaction to agricultural odors, noises, or livestock reaction to development, noises and activities that could result in litigation requiring to reduce levels of agricultural activity." Once again, the owners of the adjacent properties have made statements to how loud music parties, extra lighting will affect their livestock, which in turn reduces the level of agricultural activity. Ms. Ledford has even had on her website that she can have loud music by law until 10:00 PM on certain days and 11:00 on Saturdays. You've been informed at the previous meeting of the potential litigation outside of this series of meetings, and that, you know, reflects back on what I just read, the culpability in this matter is very evident. Policy A193: Land Development Code Regulation. To implement this plan shall be based on the intent of the following Future Land Category Description Guidelines. I'll cover subsection nine, Agriculture. Residential development shall be allowed at a density of one dwelling per 10 acres, except within military-restricted overlay zones. Residential departments shall be limited to the maximum of one dwelling per 20 acres. An increase in density is allowed up to a maximum of one dwelling per five acres for parcels of budding or having direct access to county-maintained roads, with the exception of new platted subdivisions, which will be limited to maximum of one dwelling per 10 acres. With that being said, it seems very hypocritical to the limit of the dwellings on the size of acreage for a homeowner, but however, when we start talking about a PUD and having a high-density RV park on the equivalent, it just doesn't make sense. But then again, money talks. The residents who live near this property will be affected by the change and have clearly told you that it's not compatible with their desired lifestyle. Additionally, 311 residents have signed a change.org petition to agree they don't want it. In conclusion, I'd like to hear from each county commissioner to understand how, based on these facts from your comprehensive plan, that you can claim that the proposed PUD is compatible with our lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Next is Stephanie Loznica. I'm sorry if I butchered your name. I didn't mean to.
I'm married to a husband. I'm thirty-three years ago. My maiden name was Scream. But he was working.
If you would give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Stephanie Loznica. I live at 8447 State Road 100, Melrose, Florida, 32666. And I am a resident of the Forest, Lake Forest Plantations. Let me just start by saying that the topic I wish to discuss with you today is the inappropriate placement of this PUD in a residential neighborhood in Putnam County. When I walk out my front door right now, as was stated earlier, I see rolling pastures, a beautiful, beautiful area with live animals, wildlife of all kinds. When we get an RV park, if it's approved, and it will, when I open my front door, I will see all kinds of travel trailers, people coming in, people going out. It will be a very, much more hectic lifestyle for us. I have grandchildren. They come out there, they play. We don't worry about it because they're safe in that area. All the neighbors know each other, and we get along. Currently, in Putnam County, I gave you guys some maps. There are 17 campgrounds, RV sites, two more are already under construction. And if you review the aerial images that I have submitted to the committee, you will see that Putnam County will have a total of 1,055 RV sites. I'm not sure how many you guys need in Putnam County, but anyway. However, the satellite images of all these campgrounds reveal three consistent themes. Number one, they're either in an isolated area, or they are in an area that has already been zoned commercial, or they're located on the water. And Ms. Ledford's proposed PUD was none of the above. Our area is, as you've already been told, agro-residential, and the property was zoned that way because we didn't want commercial people coming in and building, you know, different types of things. We didn't want a handiway next door, things of that nature. The RV park is, we all feel, is not compatible in our area. Nowhere else in Putnam County, and you can study your map if you choose to, is there an RV park in the middle of a rural residential neighborhood. Lake Forest Plantations was zoned agro-residential to prevent this type of construction in the middle of a rural residential neighborhood. This is why we chose to build a home there. We lived in town, and it was a rat race, and we decided we wanted to get out in the woods, where we could walk around, see nature, and do that sort of thing. In my mind, and the mind of the residents there, there is no way that our residential area is not going to change with a business there. It's just not going to happen. It is clearly evident that the land users are opposed to this, and within the PUD, I'm not sure how it was deemed compatible, but in the existing... I'm not sure how it was deemed compatible, but in the existing, I guess, with the existing restrictions, the terrain and the existing planned uses of the surrounding PUD do not fit in with what the PUD is. And in conclusion, simply put, this is not the right area for an RV park. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Snow?
My name is Matthew Snow, eight four four nine, State Road one hundred, Melrose. My question, why is the PUD being described as agritourism? What ground is there RV park for agritourism? Is this actually a business in the guise of a PUD? A business put in the middle of an agricultural residential zone that we are just calling agritourism? According to the two thousand twenty-three Florida State Statute five seventy point eight six, an agritourism activity means any agricultural activity consistent with a bona fide working farm, livestock operation, or ranch. It does not include the construction of new or additional structures or facilities intended primarily to house, shelter, transport, or otherwise accommodate members of the general public. This definition clearly indicates that in order to receive any of the protection provided by the statute, an agritourism activity must be directly linked to a farm, ranch, or forest that is pre-existing in production, and that it must be in an activity that is related to agriculture. Her entire RV park will be new construction and does not meet the definition requirements to legally fall under agritourism. Furthermore, her PUD is coined agritourism because she has easement rights to the rails and trails through a private gate. Per Charles Brown, who is the head of Goldhead State Park, which is in charge of this Rails to Trails, Ms. Ledford has never applied and was not granted a permit to use the trails from her private access on the property that she was deeded. Also, Don Miller, the previous owner and current landowner of the deeded easement, has never applied for a permit either. Mr. Brown said that just because a piece of property backs up to the trail, that does not give you access to it from that location. It is considered a state park, and you only have access at certain locations, mainly the trailheads. He also stated he had no idea how no one in zoning and planning thought to look into this, and that there's a very low probability of her ever to be granted access. In the description and background on this project, it is stated, and I quote, "The proposed development is in within close proximity to the rails and trails. It is a critical component of the proposed development," and now she has no access to it. My question to you all is this. First, if the trail is such a critical component to this RV project and is no longer able to be used in this project, then this project just becomes a typical RV park, not a community recreational park that you all are looking forward to, which then poses a question. If the location was chosen based on having access to the rails and trails, would this project not be better suited somewhere else? Second, if staff didn't know to look into this part of the project, and I did, it is deemed a critical component of approving it, what else could be wrong with the proposal? Can their recommendation of approval still be validated? The zoning commission recommended denial, and I ask that you do the same on the grounds that this is not the right location, the public no longer has access off the rails and trails. Mistakes have been made this entire process, and it does not legally meet the requirements to label this project agritourism. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Susan Stanley?
My name is Susan Stanley, and I live at eighteen hundred one, State Road one hundred, Melrose, in Putnam County. Now, we've tried to follow the proper procedure and voice our objections to this rezoning request, and as our elected representatives, we're expecting you to hear what we think will be good for our community and not what others outside our community think will be good for us. First, I wanted to correct Mr. Holmes' statement that the last meeting, the only reason the planning board voted was to deny the public opposition, but during the board discussion, there was concerns about the vagueness of her proposal, and that played into their decision. It wasn't simply public opposition. Secondly, Mr. Holmes stated if all it took was a popular vote of those in attendance and submitted emails and letters, then we could save a lot of time at these meetings, but we could also say that if all it took was to present a plan to Mr. Baker and for him to sit in his comfortable fluorescent-lit and air-conditioned office and to check off each requirement in the code of ordinances as he interprets it as being met, then what's the legit, why would we even need a public hearing? And Mr. Holmes put it this way, "The staff report addressing factors deemed relevant on the one hand, and the public opinion on the other hand," and that implies that the residents' objections and opinions are not a basis for making a decision, to which Commissioner Harvey commented that's right. So I ask you, why don't you do that? Because the Florida statutes dictate that the public has a right to speak, and that our opinions and our objections matter. So much so, the statute says you must have two meetings, and one of them, they suggest, should be held after five P M. on a weekday for the purpose of allowing people who work the opportunity to attend and voice their opinion. I want to publicly thank Commissioner Adams Act for trying to abide by the spirit of this statute by voting against this meeting held today at nine A M. Thank you. One PUD requirement says the type of development proposed must be consistent with the future land use map. Ms. Ledford has alluded in past meetings she'd like to increase the number of RV sites, and it's not too hard to imagine that Mr. Miller, who doesn't live in our community, sold her the property, owns the neighboring twenty-six acres, and has advertised in the past availability of RV intense sites and is currently hosting RVs on his site, will in one way or another join in this kind of development. Therefore, if you approve this rezoning, the future land use of this area is going to change, and it's going to change to more intense use that tourism brings. There's planning and zoning reality, and then there's our lives' reality. Technically, even though there is only one residence, the reality for us is that one hundred, two hundred, and even more people will be living next door, and that is very different from one single-family residence. We're expecting you to consider our legitimate objections on the same level as the comprehensive plan and codes as you discuss and make your decision today, and we would like to hear your reasons for your decision. Thank you.
Thank you for covering. Timmy, Timothy Stanley?
Good morning, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Timothy Stanley. I live at one sixteen South Jasmine Avenue, Melrose, Florida, which is just down the road from the proposed RV resort, and I am a resident of Putnam County. I'd like to build on some of what Mrs. Stanley and what Mr. Snow were saying earlier. If you listen to the video of last month's meeting, it seems very clear from the applicant's statements that this rezoning request is for the purpose of establishing a tourist destination here in the middle of our rural agrarian neighborhood. There is an expressed desire for agritourism, as was addressed, and all the activities mentioned by the applicant are designed to give a unique experience, in her words, "not found in many other places." The whole point of this is to attract people from out of the area to come here as a destination. This phenomenon has a term, touristification. It's a global concept where a place changes as it becomes an object of tourist consumption. This involves a shift in the nature and use of the neighborhood. With common sense, you can understand that an influx of tourists into a neighborhood may cause services, facilities, and shops to be oriented to the tourist preferences rather than those of the local residents. The RV park mentioned before, seven miles from my home in Bradford County, is a prime example. It is not border residential properties like ours, but a swamp and a dump, yet it has grown from just a few hundred to nearly a thousand sites. It is now surrounded by commercial properties and has already changed the character of the small town of Keystone Heights. The growth and traffic is overwhelming. With this influx into a community, local residents will be less willing to pay for houses at that location, and some will move. Those wishing the rural lifestyle will not be coming here to purchase those properties. Where in the comp plan or codes does it indicate our area to be a tourist destination? There are no similar businesses in our community. Does the community have a say in how that community grows? I say it does, as does the Florida statutes just referenced. The Putnam County Comprehensive Plan, Goal A dot one, also states that the quality of life and the residents' desired lifestyle matter. I realize the tax revenue from RV parks is extremely enticing to the county. If an RV park can flourish next to a swamp and a dump, Ms. Ledford's plan could just as easily succeed in another location along Rails to Trails, more suited for the land use. I ask that you, as our elected Board of County Commissioners, take to heart the purpose of these hearings. This is your opportunity to listen to those you represent and whose homes, properties, and lifestyles are directly impacted by this proposal and who have presented and will continue to present diverse and valid arguments why you should, as I am requesting, deny the application and preserve the rural, agricultural, and residential nature of this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. David Stanley?
My name is David Stanley, and I'm a Putnam County resident. My address is eighteen oh one, State Road one hundred, in Melrose, next door to the proposed PUD. I wish I had time to cover all these Land Development Codes forty-five dash two two three that spells out the guidelines that the Board of County Commissioners must, must use to approve a PUD. But among them are the following. The PUD must meet the general intent of the county's Land Development Code, and the PUD must comply with standards for applicability listed in five, four five two two A. As my wife has already pointed out, this subsection is not met when considering that the PUD design must preserve and protect the neighborhood character and be consistent with the comprehensive land use plan policies. The PUD must not be placed in an area of agricultural land use unless it is consistent with comprehensive land use plan. Mr. Owens has already shown that the PUD violates a comprehensive land use plan, Goal A one, as have others. The P is being placed abutting agricultural zone land, and I'll refer you to the future land use map you just received. This PUD fails on this point. The PUD must comply with the standards for applicability listed in subsection B, which says that the PUD must avoid nuisances of undue noise, odor, and traffic. No fence, or wall, or setback, or evergreen tree will prevent the noise from the music, the barking of dogs, the ninety-plus RV rooftop air conditioners, the diesel engines, the generators, the odors of campfires, and barbecue grills from adversely affecting the residents, some of which are living and raising adolescent children and animals within two hundred feet of this proposed PUD. The only thing that will prevent these nuisances from affecting those that live next to this P is distance. The Land Development Code forty-five dash one ninety-six that establishes buffer requirements for a PUD are vastly insufficient to prevent the nuisances of noise, odor, or traffic considering the activities this application lists. The fact that a buffer is required at all indicates that the PUD is incompatible with the surrounding land use. The Land Development Code section that describes the applicable buffers, we believe cannot be applied to the P, this PUD in a reasonable way when the homeowners live so close to it and are on agriculturally zoned property. The PUD is not sitting in a forest or in a bean field. So if the Board of County Commissioners must make their decision based on the controlling document forty-five dash two two three, we have shown and are convinced you must turn down the occasion for rezoning. We, your constituents, want to know, if you choose to approve this rezoning, how you could ignore the Land Development Code that, from any reasonable interpretation, in this instance, should prevent this PUD. The PUD creates undue nuisances for the surrounding homeowners and is incompatible with the desired lifestyle, and it should not be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Evan Stanley? Y'all brought the whole family, didn't you?
Yes, sir. We've been there over a hundred years. It's important to us. My name is Evan Stanley, and I currently live at four fifty-five Southeast Lakeview Drive in Keystone Heights. I grew up right across the street at eighteen oh one, State Road one hundred, and this development is at eighteen hundred, State Road one hundred, so we are directly next to them. We have been here for more than a century, and while I don't live there currently, it is my goal to move back to the family property. And the property my family has there is, is my inheritance and the inheritance for my siblings and for my children, and I'm up here to try and preserve that for my, my two little boys that I have right now. Mr. Holmes has said the only thing you should consider hearing is whether the proposal meets the requirements of the Land Development Code, in that the staff recommendation for approval is all the evidence you need. As has been said already, this completely invalidates the purpose of the Florida Legislature in establishing a public comment period. However, there are a couple of things with the staff report itself that I would like to bring to your attention. Per forty-five two twenty-three, one of the requirements is on, found in two twenty-two B two, that the land use proposed within the PUD are compatible with the terrain and the existing planned uses of the properties surrounding the PUD. An evaluation of the external compatibility should be based on the following factors: adjacent, existing, and proposed uses, and the undue noise and the things that have already been talked about. It's important to note that the phrase "existing and planned uses" in that section does not mean the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan or the future land use, because that requirement is specifically listed in the previous paragraph B one. The staff analysis regarding the surrounding zoning and land use staff comments simply state that the uses are agricultural and residential. However, this is a restating of the zoning of the adjacent parcels, not the, not the more detailed analysis required by paragraph two. Following a subsequent analysis of the existing zoning, the report simply states that staff is of the belief that proposed use is compatible with the overall residential and agricultural nature of the surrounding areas, without actually going into that further analysis. My contention is that the requirements of paragraph B two are not met by simply looking at Google Earth and the county zoning maps. Had staff properly investigated the existing planned uses of the surrounding parcels, they would have noted that the property is part of a deed-restricted subdivision and fails to meet the requirements of paragraph B two, and therefore should be denied. As has been stated multiple times, the county does not need to enforce deed restrictions, but they must be considered in determining the existing and planned uses of both the subject property and the adjacent properties. And I know staff, Florida has been getting tons of people moving in. There's no way you can cover everything. I don't want to feel like we're attacking staff or anything like that. This is one of the reasons that we have the public comment period. Paragraph B two also states that the density and intensity shall be considered when addressing the compatibility with the existing and planned uses of the surrounding properties. The properties are legally restricted to a single-family residence on ten-acre parcels, and intensive agricultural use is prohibited. Therefore, staff's reliance on activities which require special use permits to say that the intensity of the development is consistent with the land use is invalid. Indeed, staff explicitly says that the current zoning results in a lower impact than the proposed use, and can only defend the increased intensity by using activities which require special use permits and which are not permitted on the surrounding parcels. And this is the reason we have these public hearings. Staff is not perfect, doesn't have the resources to gain complete knowledge of every area in the county. Public comments can shed new light on aspects that staff cannot see. In your discussion before the vote, please be able to articulate how it fits in with the character of a deed-restricted residential agricultural community, and how it does not raise the intensity of use. I respectfully ask you to deny the request based on your Development Code, the recommendation of your planning committee, the wishes of your residents expressed, both here and in the deed restrictions in your official public record. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. George Lozniak? Did I butcher the names so bad that y'all don't know? Okay. Hopefully, I was closer than your wife.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is George Lozniak, and my address is, excuse me, eight four four seven, State Road one hundred, in Melrose. And our property lies directly north of Ms. Ledford's property, which basically would put this PUD in our front yard. I would like to speak briefly on just a few things that I have issue with regarding this PUD. Number one is incompatibility. And when I went to Webster's Dictionary and I looked up the word compatibility, it's, it's defined as capable of existing in harmony. We've talked about this time after time, and I don't think there's anyone here who honestly believes that this is going to be compatible with the existing land uses. We know that the deed restrictions are still in effect and enforceable under Florida's Markable Record Title Act. To think that putting this PUD with possibly hundreds of people, possibly hundreds of cars, noise from seven A M. till eleven P M. some nights, concessions, food trucks, live music, and the sale of alcohol, and all this is going to be harmonious with the neighbors, is a fairy tale at best. It's just not going to happen. The next thing I'd like to touch on is intensity. Common sense tells us that this PUD will bring a huge increase in the intensity on this property. A hundred and fifteen campsites will require at least a hundred and fifteen vehicles to get people there. Some are going to be pulling travel trailers, and with an average of two campus per spot is at least two hundred and thirty people. When you add in the request for concessions, food trucks, a meeting facility, a place for the sale of alcohol, and all for the sale of alcohol, and all this on a small 20-acre lot is insane. This is just, it's way too much going on here for a little 20-acre lot. Nowhere in the surrounding properties has anywhere near this type of intensity, and this makes this PUD completely incompatible. And the last thing I'd like to touch on is, I thought I was going to hear some supporters of Ms. Ledford's proposed PUD this morning, and I have the, I thought that they had the opportunity to speak. I may be wrong, but if they did, I saw no one speak on, speak up in support of this. Zero. Okay? But at the last count that I took, there were 312 signatures on the change.org petition, with many more not knowing about the petition or could not able to be here today because of work. A lot of us older people really don't do the tech thing, so a lot of people didn't sign up for it, but I'm sure that there was a lot more people out here that opposed this. President Abraham Lincoln was quoted as saying, "Democracy is the government of the people, by the people, and for the people." Commissioners, make no mistake, time after time, the people have clearly spoken, and the answer has been a clear and resounding no. Today, you have the opportunity to represent the voice of your constituents, your voters, and the taxpayers of Putnam County. I urge you to do the will of the people and vote no on this issue. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. George Payne?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is George Payne. I live at 8131 County Line Road. My property is about 800 feet from Ms. Ledford's, AKA Fantasyland, I'm going to call it. As you know, 9/11 affected not only New York City from ground zero, but around the world. Two days after 9/11, we purchased 15 acres which abuts, well, we purchased 15 acres. The day after that, Florida Woodlands announced that they were going to develop Lake Forest Plantations, which we have approximately 1,000 feet in common of property line. We put our house plans on hold, waiting to see what was going to happen. Fortunately, Florida Woodlands stayed within the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, they added some deed restrictions. We were comfortable with that, and we've been comfortable with our neighbors. Eighty to eighty-five, or excuse me, 85 to 90% of the guests at Fantasyland will comply by the rules, but then there's the other 10 to 15%. That first percentage is will be people who will bring their side-by-sides, their ATVs, no matter if they can get on there, they're going to go down 100, they're going to get on the trail. We already have that problem. I've actually been, so they ran after me, tried to hit me when I told them they couldn't be on the trail. Law enforcement was called. So that, you've got that percentage. Then you've got another percentage that Mr. Holmes seems to think is different, but it has to do with sex offenders. I happen to have a little bit of experience in that field. I've served your county for 28 years, 20 of those being investigating child sex crimes, eight being in probation. I think I know what I'm talking about. Anytime I heard a, a, a report having to do with a campground, a resort, anything like that, it always got me in the heart because I knew that there was transient people, and transient people do not have to be people who don't have money, okay? Let's look at Mr. Epstein. He has money. He had money. You had to worry about that, and so when you looked at crime rate within these campgrounds, the issue there is that these people are transient, so you can't keep up with them. So we're constantly looking throughout the state for them. So you do have those people in those areas, and you put that in, in with having the trail there, you've got a bunch of safety concerns, or I do. I've worked also as, worked with Florida Department of Law Enforcement for 10 years as a Child Adoption Response Team Investigator. During that time, we dealt with the Haley Cummins case. Haley, I had probably over 500 to 700 hours in that case. The Haley Cummins case was very complex, having to do with the number of, of issues and a number of people that were transient that lived within a 20-mile radius of where Haley Cummins was last seen. I also served, we had an issue having to deal with lack of criminal prosecution in the sex crimes. So my agency got with the Sheriff's Department, with Placow Police Department, we approached the Division Chief of the State Attorney's Office and developed a task force to look at increasing prosecution in sex crimes. In doing that, one of our biggest barriers was the transient lifestyle of people. We had to increase our communication, not only locally, statewide, but nationally, because these people move around. They're there. You just don't, you just don't hear about them because of the way they go down.
Mr. Payne, are you about to wrap?
I, I am, sir. I am.
Thank you.
Honorable Commissioners, I, in my experience in dealing with sex crimes, you had to, I always wanted to look at a child and say, "I'm sorry, I couldn't do that." I've been an expert witness in your court that led to life sentences for people, okay? I couldn't do that because I didn't want to corrupt the case. You're going to have the opportunity at some point to face your grandchild, my grandchild, your child, the neighbor's child, or somebody you don't know, but you really don't want them to go down to a sex crime. Are you going to be able to sit there and say you're sorry? And then, no. You won't have to do it one time, but that's going to keep happening because you lost control when you did the PUD. Thank you for your time, and God bless America.
Thank you, sir. David Johnson?
My name is David Johnson. I live at 8312 Forest Hills Road in Melrose, Florida. I am a resident of Clay County, but I am part of the community of Melrose and where this RV park is planned. Under the requirements for a planned unit development, Section 45-222, it lists the minimum requirements necessary for a rezoning of a property to be granted. One of those minimum requirements is that the PUD must be compatible with the adjacent properties. According to Section B, Subsection 2, "To be compatible, the PUD must be designed to, quote, 'avoid undue noise, odor, traffic, or other nuisances and dangers to the abutting property owners,' end quote." I would like to speak this morning to the dangers that this PUD poses to the surrounding property owners of Putnam and Clay Counties as I address some major safety concerns. In the five years that I've lived at Forest Hills, I've never seen a public county sheriff's patrol car in our community or even on Highway 100. Based on the experiences I've heard from other people, the average response time for the police to our community is about 40 to 45 minutes. Given the previous expert testimony as to sexual predators' use of RV parks to keep from being traced, this lack of adequate police patrols will certainly put our community children at risk for molestation, kidnapping, and worst of all, possible murder. I'm also concerned for our community when it comes to fire protection. Our community has no fire hydrants for miles and is composed of open pastures and woods that burn really fast. An RV park has many opportunities for fires to get out of control, including the use of fire pits, barbecues, and propane tanks. And should a fire get out of control, the nearest fire stations are located six to eight miles away in Melrose and Flora Home, and both of those are volunteer fire departments and as such have even longer response times to any emergency with fire. The proposed earth-and-burn barrier to prevent noise from the neighborhood will do nothing to prevent the fire from escaping onto adjacent properties and into the rest of our communities. That's because it's composed of the very same combustible vegetation as the rest of the property. And then finally, I want to speak to the issue concerning road traffic safety. The proposed RV park entrance will be located on State Highway 100 where the speed limit is 60 miles per hour. That wouldn't be so bad, except one end of the proposed PUD is located on a blind curve and the other end is located on a blind hill. Not only will semi-trucks and others have a difficult time stopping for a turning RV, but also the RV will have a very difficult time determining whether it's safe for them to pull out into oncoming traffic. Not to mention Highway 100 is also a hurricane evacuation route, which proposes its own list of problems for RVs having to evacuate. So in conclusion, this proposed PUD does not meet the minimum requirement necessary to be compatible with our adjacent properties or the rest of this agricultural community, particularly when it comes to safety. This part of Putnam County lacks the infrastructure and resources necessary to protect our community from potential crime, fire, and traffic hazards that would be present with this RV park. So please ask yourself this question: Why would I want to destroy the dreams of this agricultural community and put the lives and livelihood of this community's families and children at risk for the sake of a fantasy dream of one person's commercial endeavor? And according to your own Putnam County documents, this PUD simply is not compatible with our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mark Chatten? If you'll give your name and address on the record, please, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm Mark Chatten. I live at 1809 State Road 100 in Putnam County. My wife and I bought our 12-and-a-half-acre home site in 2004. Our property is in Lake Forest Plantation, an unplatted subdivision. The subdivision has restricted covenants recorded in July 2003, both in Putnam and Clay Counties. There's no record of anywhere of these restrictive covenants being repealed or amended. The property that you are considering for rezoning is also located within the subdivision and is subject to the same covenants. The project as presented will violate several of these deed restrictions. Most apparent is number nine, which states, "No trade or business, or any noxious or offensive activity shall be carried on upon the property in any way that may or may become an annoyance or nuisance to the other owners of the subject property." I believe it has been demonstrated today by comments of many people that are owners at this public hearing that the proposed development is obnoxious and offensive to them. However, I'm not asking you to enforce a restrictive covenant. I'm asking that you not conflict, not be in conflict with your own ordinances. The Land Development Code, Section 46-6, General Rules of Interpretation, Paragraph G reads, "It is not intended for this code to interfere with, or abrogate, or annul any easements, covenants, restrictions, or other agreements between parties, where any provision of this code imposes restrictions different from those imposed by other provisions of this code, or any other ordinance, rule, or regulation, or other provision of law, the provisions that are most restrictive or impose higher standards shall control." By rezoning this property, you will be in convict of this provision, and it may be implied that the county is giving the owner the authority to violate these covenants. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Brittany Snow?
Brittany Snow, 8449 State Road 100, Melrose. I'm asking you today to deny this because it's not the right location. Deny this because it's incompatible with your own code of ordinances. This development is being proposed in a heavy residential area amidst people's homes. The owner of this project isn't even going to live there. She has stated at both meetings and on her website that she's going back to her home in Placca. Why? Let me tell you why. Because she wants her own privacy, her own safety, her own peace and quiet. And if this was not true, she would continue living on the property in her RV that's there now. But no, once this project is developed, she will turn it over to a manager and return to her home. The very thing that you will all take from us if you approve this project: Our home, our privacy, our safety, and our peace and quiet. The exact liberties that every single other person in this room gets to have, she still gets to have, but we won't. This decision to approve this rezoning will negatively affect the surrounding community forever. You will be changing the rural identity of this area forever, and you have no idea how this decision will adversely affect the families for generations to come. It's been said that this proposal is positively, is benefiting the community positively, and I ask how. What community are you basing that off of? Because the community is here today speaking in opposition to this project. The community that matters the most and the community that affects the most have emailed, have voiced that they don't want it and it's not compatible with this future land use. All the other community that has talked about it and spoke out for it are going to get to go back to their homes once vacation is over, to their safety, their privacy, their peace, and their quiet. It is your job, your role, your responsibility as an elected body government to listen to the constituents and to take in consideration the opposition. After all, that is what you were elected to do. If this was not the case, then you could put PODs wherever you wanted, as long as they legally met your code of ordinances. But be as it may, you have to have these meetings where we get to voice our concerns, and you're supposed to listen and make third-party decisions based off that alone. Not have your mind made up before we ever walked in this building. Not have your mind made up because of unjust meetings, monetary gifts, ex parte communications, or conflicts of interest. If there is so much opposition, and we have also proved last meeting, this meeting, with evidence that this project does not fit multiple outliers in your own code of ordinances, then I ask you, on what grounds are you approving this project? Tell me why this PUD fits here. And after you do that, in conclusion, I want you to look at every resident that this project is going to affect negatively, and I want you to tell them that you're sorry. I want you to look them in their face and tell them that you don't care about their voice, their opinion, their concerns, their privacy, and their safety, and their peace and quiet. And more importantly, their vote. Because after all, many of these constituents speaking today voted for you all. And I can assure, after this decision, come next election, you will hear all of our voices again. Don't take the Clay County residents out of this equation. As you've seen at this meeting, we are quite capable of rallying the community, and we can rally again. This? You hear this? This peace? This silence? This will be the last time we ever have that if you vote to approve this project today. Thank you.
Hopefully you don't think threatening us will get you anywhere. Okay. Sandra Johnson?
Good morning. My name is Sandra Johnson. I live at 144 Haymaker Road in Melrose, and I'm a resident of Lake Forest Plantation. I wish I had something brand-new to offer you, but I do not. But I think that what's been said, you know, in various ways and repetitively, is awfully important, so I'm going to do a little bit more of that again myself. You know, Mr. Holmes, in his presentation last time, brushed off the concerns of residents because they never, neighbors never like change. But that's not fair, and it's not your, your position to not listen to us, which I, I believe you are doing today. You've heard about the covenants and restrictions. I spoke about them at length myself at the last, the last meeting. They are in effect for 10 more years, and they affect this property and the 150 or so acres that surround it. You've made it clear that you can't enforce them, and I understand that. But I hope that you are strongly considering them and how important they have been to the people who live in that area and how we have relied on them in making decisions to live there and to, to build homes. There's plenty of vacant land in Putnam County in which a home could have been built, but we, we chose to be there, importantly, because it provided, we thought, a safety net for what our immediate neighborhood would look like. Even though you can't enforce the covenants, you can follow Section 45-6G, the Land Development Code, that says, "The code, it is not intended that the code interfere with, abrogate, or annul any covenants, restrictions, and agreements among parties." And that's certainly what this PUD would do, because those covenants are an agreement among us as to what we expect the land to be used for. You've heard that Section 45-222 of the code requires that for a PUD to be approved, the use must be compatible with existing and planned uses. 20 acres on which is built a house, a barn, and a garage, or maybe both, which is what surrounds the project property, is in no possible way compatible with or comparable to 20 acres unto which is crammed 44 RV sites, 15 glamping sites, numerous primitive camping sites. You've heard the list: A dog park, a butterfly garden, a camp store, caretaker's quarters, visitor parking, and an event center for weddings or other events, complete with people and vehicles, in and out at all hours, noise, lights, traffic, and pollution. The applicant showed you a map with one smiley face at the last meeting, representing the enjoining... the adjoining property owner. I hope that you don't think that his opinion has more weight than those of us who are a few feet further away, because he sold the applicant her property and hopes to sell her the adjoining property to continue this use. So yes, he is smiling, but there are no other smiling faces in the area. I would like to ask the people who are here, not all of whom are speaking, who oppose the RV park, to stand. I know there would be more if, if we'd had the meeting at a different time and work weren't an issue. But I ask you to please consider all of us, and if you can't do that, then look at the Land Development Code that does not support this use, however unique and interesting it might be, it is not supported in this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, excuse me, next I have Jason O'Brien.
My name is Jason O'Brien. I live on 122 S Jasmine Avenue, actually right next to the Stanleys, as you've heard today. I'm going to talk to each and one of you. Thank you so much for hearing us, and you've heard a slew of information presented to you, and I'm talking to each and every one of you. I do not envy your decision right now. I would like to preface this as, this is the need of the many instead of the few. You've heard numerous different rules, regulations, facts, and opinions, all presented to you today. I'm not gonna make a long-winded conversation. I don't have anything written down, as you can tell, but you guys got presented a book today. The book is The Land Remembered. What you're talking about is going to alter and change what's currently there. Mr. Harvey, you said you loved going out and being in the bush, enjoying the rural area. This will take that away. This will take away all these people's ideas and dreams that they've already had. The idea that's being presented to you, the RV park, is a great idea, don't get me wrong. I am not the right place to put this. I have been there for twenty years. I drive past that field every morning. I see the cows. I see the nice rural area. Once an RV park comes into play, it isn't going to change the environment completely. People are so used to that area being rural area. The business plan, business model that she is presenting to you, $200 a night, I don't know anybody who's going to pay $200 a night to just be able to have access to a rail and trail head, and that is even taken away. Not even at Walt Disney World, right next to Walt Disney World, or any of the other public areas would anybody pay $200 a night. Her business model is flawed. What will happen is she won't be able to complete any of the things she's promising you that will not bring revenue into Putnam County. It will actually diminish revenue coming into Putnam County, such as what's happening with Hog Waller, where there is no medical capabilities, and when somebody gets hurt, they drop them at the side of the road, so that it is a county issue at that point and not a local property issue. Once again, thank you for your time, and I do appreciate you giving us a voice.
Natalie Dean.
Good morning. I'm short.
Me too.
Um, I don't, my name is Natalie Dean. I live at 8081 County Line Road. I am one of those parcels that Woodland Three Limited sold as Lake Forest Plantation. I have 10.7 acres there. I don't have a prepared speech for you today. I just wanted to talk about a few things that I have that come to mind. Number one is, is, um, one of the things that, that her representative spoke about that I wanted to bring up is, he said that if, for some reason, that what she wanted to do didn't work out, that if she, if she abandoned it, that it would revert back to the original agriculture zoning. I've not seen that anywhere in anything, so that concerned me a little bit. Another thing is, is the live music, okay? I live about a mile, as a crow flies, from the Howlin' Wolf, and when they're going strong, we, like I said, I'm a mile, we can sing to their songs. We know exactly what songs that they're playing and all. And I want to say, too, that there, I know last time and the time before that, and everyone who's in approval with her has talked about what a nice person she is, wonderful, nice person. Well, there are hundreds of people who live there already, long before she even knew that property existed, who are nice. I've met many, many, many of them, and we just want to keep our property, our area, just, you know, the way it is, because that's why we moved there. That's why my husband and I retire, my husband retired from the military, and we still live there because of it. But, um, and also, her representative spoke about, in a, it sounded to me like in a negative way about the agriculture zoning, and that you don't know what you're going to get, and this, that, and the other. All I can say is, for decades, and I don't really know how long, that property has been zoned agriculture, and no one, up to this point, has ever had a problem with it. Right after we moved there, we did have a deputy sheriff come to our house at 12:30 in the morning to inform us that there had been an accident on that property, had been an accident, the person missed the curve and went straight to that property, and the, and the owner had an 1,800-pound bull that had gotten out, and he was just making sure that, to let us know. But, um, um, other than that, I really don't have any other thing, other than, we've heard from her people as well, that it is a beautiful, beautiful property, and it is. It is a gorgeous, rolling, green pasture with lots of new and old, old oak tree growth, and when she plows it down, it won't be that anymore. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle Rubin.
I am Michelle Rubin. I live on County Line Road in Melrose, about a five-minute walk down the trail from this property. I'm a Clay County resident, as many others here are. This property on the border of Putnam and Clay County is separated enough from businesses and larger residential areas in Putnam that the effect will more greatly impact Clay residents and businesses, not to mention wildlife and roads. So we have here a large amount of Clay County residents and many others who can't make it during work hours, who live in the woods, wanting to keep it as rustic, quiet, and natural as possible, residents who chose their homes and lands because it was surrounded directly by only residential and agricultural land, pleading with Putnam to not rezon a land that will greatly change its surrounding area for the residents. And I am just asking you to err on the side of caution and respect to your Clay County neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Hamilton.
I am here to support all of these neighbors who do not want that RV park in their backyards. I want to talk about the noise. I want to talk about amplified music. We have, um, I remember, y'all worked really hard on getting that new noise ordinance going on with all the problems I was having and other people were having with the amplified music and microphones. I was, after I went through a long ordeal trying to solve my problem, which had nothing to do with an RV park, I was contacted by a group of people from Crescent City, who were the neighbors surrounding the RV park that went in there. They wanted to know what I did, how I did it, how did I get it stopped? Well, it was the Howlin' Wolf. It's not stopped, but it's better. They were watching, they could not watch television in their own home because of the music from the RV park. Nobody would turn it down. Nobody would do anything about it. I couldn't watch TV in my house. I'm two miles from the Howlin' Wolf, and it comes across the prairie. Depending on which way that wind's blowing, depending on what the weather environments are, you have no idea what that sound's going to do out there. It is not an appropriate place to pack forty-four RVs in there and continue to grow it. I am concerned, when I retired, sorry, when I retired, I bought an RV, a small camping trailer. I've been traveling all over the country. When I got back this last trip, just a week or so ago, my neighbors bombarded me with this whole thing, so I'm kind of new to the table on this whole RV park thing. I'm right down the road from it. When I stay at an RV park like they're talking about putting in there, it's for one night so I can dump seven to nine gallons of sewage and go on and camp other places where you don't have the hookups and things. I use apps like HipCamp, and there's Harvest Host, and these are private properties you can stay on, you're a guest. They usually don't have electricity and all that kind of thing, but they're very quiet and peaceful places to stay. And when one of those places is on my way to where I'm going, I'm there one night, you get seven to nine gallons of sewage, and I'm gone. Okay? So it's not really appropriate for that area, for those families, and I have been out of touch with the noise ordinance. Mr. Harvey, is it the same one we worked on? Okay. I'm going to be putting in a public records request, or I'll ask you. I want to know how many times that has been enforced. Has anybody filed complaints under it? Has it actually been enforced, and has there been consequences? Because we all know the previous noise ordinance, the sheriff's department tried, but it was useless. There was nothing they could do. I'm also concerned with the willingness of the sheriff's department. Now, this conversation I had goes back five, six, seven years, I don't remember how long ago, that they have to put the deputies on radio silence for an extended period of time before they, while they take readings for the sound to be able to enforce anything. And to me, that kind of puts the deputies in a little bit of danger when they don't have a way to contact, they can't stop and get help if they need backup or things like that. So in order to help you guys out, I will be looking into the enforcement of this. I want to find out more about it, because if this RV park does what the one Crescent City did to the neighbors in that area and neighbors who lived across the river, if, you're going to have a lot more complaints, enforcement, and if you can't, what I ended up having to do back then, I had to go file the nuisance suit, and then you're into courts and money and lawyers, and it gets even more complicated after that. I know our noise ordinance was to try to help protect us, so we didn't have to spend that kind of money to live peacefully in this county. So please listen to these people. I can tell you what's going to happen with the music.
Hamilton, are you about to wrap it up?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay.
Just from my observation, since we did the noise ordinance, I haven't received a single call as a commissioner complaining about noise, honestly, since we did that. So I don't know if it's just because it exists, but that was probably eighty percent of my calls before we did it. So the idea that an ordinance exists sometimes creates compliance, so hopefully your, your data searching does that, but I can't remember last time I got a noise ordinance complaint, and it was one of the biggest things I ever talked to Joe Wells about before that, so thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. I think those are all the speaker cards I have. I've got two left here, but I'm almost certain that they're misclassified. I don't believe Mr. Corn or Mr. Leary is here to speak about this case. I believe last time around, they were both in the East Palaca case, so I'm going to hold these cards. I don't see either one of them here to ask them, so I'm going to hold these cards until 12:30. Do you have any more comment cards on this case? Okay. Is there anybody that turned in a comment card that maybe got misclassified, or is there someone else that would like to speak before we, uh, ask? Does, uh, does the agent want to rebut at this point, Mr. Holmes?
As I've indicated before, having participated in an awful lot of these over the years, I totally respect and appreciate the right of folks to express opinions. It's, um, more helpful when their opinions are based upon logic or fact or expertise, but they have a right to express them regardless. And that's what I've heard a lot of in the last few minutes. You know, it's interesting, and I know this isn't court, but court rules are designed to try to increase the weight and the credibility of evidence that's presented, and some people don't like rules by nature, but one rule in court is that you can express, many people can express opinions, but in order for the opinion to be given weight in terms of the ultimate issue, there has to be a showing of the expertise of the speaker to express that opinion. Now, I'm getting to this. I heard, I don't know, thirty or forty land planters in the room today.
Speak with me, Mr. Holmes.
I heard thirty or forty land planters in the room today, but none of them offered any indication of what their experience, expertise, or knowledge was regarding the rules of land planting. None of us like rules in a way, I mean, because they get in the way sometimes of what we want to do or say. But if you think about it, rules are the only way that we have of assuring consistency in any body that makes decisions, whether it be a court, a county commission, a planning commission, or anything else. And I say that for this reason. You have a rule, you have a set of rules, your comprehensive plan, your land development regulations. They embody concepts and definitions, and they set criteria and benchmarks. You have a staff trained to interpret those rules and regulations and trained to understand what factors trigger and satisfy what criteria. Now, that staff considered this project for months and considered the issue of compatibility, because that's what I heard mostly. It's not compatible, and a whole lot of us don't want it. And by the way, if you vote against us, you need to look us in the eye and tell us why and understand we're coming for you when you go for election. But that's not a threat, it's just a comment.
Are you threatening me too, or you just, are you just repeating what she said?
I know better than to threaten you, Mr. Chatten. I'm repeating what I heard. But the fact is that for months now, that staff of trained folks that you put trust in day in, day out, has been considering all the factors that have been talked about, compatibility being one. Compatibility, not with what's, just what's there now, but what the zoning code allows to be in all these other properties, and deed restrictions we've already, we've already kind of discussed, I think, they are for this body to determine. And no one has brought information to that group, your staff, questioning compatibility with comp plan, or at least no, no question or no factor that they consider persuasive, questioning your compatibility with comp plan, which includes compatibility with surrounding uses, questioning whether or not that complies with the requirements that you have to find in order to approve a PUD, or questioning whether or not the safeguards that are allowed and provided for by the various regulatory authorities, including the sheriff's office, can be effective. That's, that's enforcement's a whole other issue in and of itself. So what, what I guess I'm saying is that, there's no doubt there are a lot of people who stood up and said, "We're against it." We're back to that same old thing. You know, it's a matter of how many are for and how many against, but that's not what our law says is the way you go. It's not quantity, it's quality of comment. And saying the same wrong thing over and over again doesn't make it right. You can say it's not compatible, but if the rules that we follow find that it's compatible, then you have to say why, you, how you can challenge that finding of compatibility. You know, our, our laws, our laws used to comprise about two volumes of a statute- You know, our laws, our laws used to comprise about two volumes of a statute book. Now, there's about four volumes of a statute book, except most of us all have them online to look at. Can you imagine what we would have in this country, in this state, in this county if everybody got to interpret what every law meant for themselves? That's not the way an orderly society works. Instead, there are interpretations that are accepted as being conventional and applicable. And yet, you rely upon experts for that, whether you like it or not, you rely upon experts for that. My statement is that the requirements of your PUD, your code, have been met by the application, that finding has been made by your staff, and simply saying that that's not true isn't enough to offset that. The landlord, excuse me, the developer, the owner has indicated willingness to accept safeguards that would assist in making the use more palatable, less offensive even to those who find it offensive by nature. And with those safeguards, the dire consequences that are being predicted without any real, without any real example to show. I mean, you had people come in with RV parks to say, "None of that stuff was happening." You had no one who has an RV park who lives next to an RV park coming in to say, "These are the problems we're experiencing every day." But yet, it's okay to stand up and say that, "I know if this one's approved, it's gonna be the one that absolutely destroys this entire area." It's our position that the application that's been submitted meets the criteria of the code, it's been studied, it's been vetted, together with the regulatory authorities, including the Health Department and DOT and every other agency that will have to weigh in on this, it will assure a good and viable project and we'd ask for your approval.
Mr. Holmes, before you leave, could I ask you a couple of questions and you may have to talk to Ms. Ledford about this. Is the PUD as presented to us today open for any possible changes such as, I think one of my concerns is the same as Commissioner Pickens is about the live music late at night. And so, would the PUD agreement be open to maybe shorter hours for the live music than quiet times? I do a little RVing myself and so I understand that eleven o'clock, you don't want the neighbor playing their radio or doing whatever at eleven o'clock at night. In fact, I'd just seen it be eight-thirty because I would go to bed early, but anyhow, I understand, but the live music, I think, is a valid concern here, especially if you've got a wedding going and it's roaring. We have the problem at the fairground right now. It's supposed to be stopped at ten o'clock, I believe it is, and some times at eleven-thirty, I get calls from people who, it's blasting at eleven-thirty and somebody's got to go physically shut them down, or they've got to have a deputy down there that at ten o'clock tells them, "You're done," or they'll just keep on going. So, that would be my first question. Would you consider, if it passed, would you consider having shorter or earlier hours in the evening that a live band could perform?
Yes, sir, one hundred percent. That's not the intentions. If we need to put it in the PUD, I'm more than happy to. No amplified outside, amplified sound after.
I think it needs to be in the PUD if we're gonna do it to where it would be. The other question I have is that, it's a valid concern, I believe, that if something happened, because as Holmes stated a moment ago, that this is first step. So, if you get this passed today, you've still got to go through multiple steps from DOT to DRC, to Development Review Committee, to way up the list, Health Department, I mean, the list is almost endless, but you'll have to go through all them. My concern is if you fail somewhere along the way in making this happen, that this mobile home, that this PUD or an RV park will be there indefinitely unless we put it in there that it stops at some point. I believe that just, we got another case coming up after this one that was done in oh-seven, and I can't find the one in East Palaca that's a PUD, and I can't find where they put it in there that it sunsetted at whatever point. I've missed it if it's in there. And so, it does unset. So, if that's the case, could we put something in the PUD agreement to make sure that if it's not successful in six or eight years or whatever point, that it sunsets back to You wanna pitch in, Zach?
I don't know if that blends the lines of contract zoning with the PUD. I'd probably defer to our legal counsel. I've heard of sunsetting and reverting back to the original zoning, but I don't know if that's applicable with state statutes today.
Well, it's happened before, I know that to be a fact, and Mr. Holmes used to be in the land use, well, he still is a land use attorney, but he used to do it, and I know that it used to sunset back at some point.
You can, I don't believe that's contract zoning.
Okay.
Or conditional zoning.
So, I think that if you don't sunset it in the PUD, that what happens is it could go on forever. So, thirty years from now, there could be, for lack of a better term, please excuse if I'm not trying to offend anybody, a bastard piece of property out there that's zoned for something that probably, you don't want somebody else picking up and going on with it. So, give a reasonable amount of time and then sunset it.
Actually, I'm familiar with other code provisions in other jurisdictions that have some form of sunsetting, for lack of a better term, dependent upon completion of the PUD, maybe even more than one threshold, beginning of the, you know, actual construction of the PUD and completion of the PUD. So, I'm totally familiar with what you're suggesting. I can't speak for the applicant, but it's not an unusual concept to find in regulations as well as in agreements.
I think, Commissioner Turner, I would wanna understand a little bit better by what we mean, what would be the conditions that it would, I mean, is my land now reverts back to ag land, I can't sell it, are we talking about like?
I don't know that I, that we would have the authority to make that happen or not, but please understand, I don't have the authority to sit here and negotiate for my fellow commissioners. So, this is you and I talking, one commissioner on you, to see if that would be a possibility. Because if they were trying to negotiate for me, then I probably wouldn't like it any more than they're gonna like me trying to negotiate. I'm just saying that for me to get on board with this, it can't be, it can't be an indefinite PUD. It just can't be. There has to be some period of time that if this doesn't work, that then you could, you could still sell your property, you could still do whatever you wanted, you could still sell it as an RV park. I don't, my point is, is that we don't, I don't want a piece of property there in twelve years that never's gonna be an RV park and somebody comes in and picks it up and develops it down the road somewhere under a completely different set of circumstances and the people in the area have to live with that over their shoulder, just like East Palaca. It's exactly the same thing where they got a four-hundred acre PUD there from Public Works to the river that's got a three-point-seven unit per acre and it's all farmland right now, but it's in place.
So, my question would be what the trigger is for the sunset, i.e., and this is just a question, would the trigger be that if it's not fully developed in a certain period of time? Would the trigger be that if it's not substantially developed in accord with the PUD agreement in a certain period of time? I guess my only question is what would the trigger be for the sunset?
And I don't know that I can answer that, Don, I really don't. I just think there needs to be something in there and I'm certainly not negotiating for my fellow commissioners here, I'm just telling you how I feel, and is that something's got to be put in there to where, I mean, I'd be open for suggestions, you know, that if you've broke ground with a complete development agreement by a certain time, that would count. You could, I mean, I'm just trying to snowball it here, but still, I just think something's got to be put in there to where if it's not done and the project gets set aside, that it's over with.
I hear you. Does your attorney have any suggestion? Don't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Commando.
That's fine, Mr. Holmes. I mean, I think you've seen something similar, if you don't have completion of the project within, I mean, time periods I've seen are ten years, fifteen years, something like
Would y'all be open to what I suggested a moment ago? I'm not, Commissioners, I am not negotiating for y'all, I'm just asking the question.
I am one hundred percent open to having the discussion and then I think we would just wanna understand what the terms would have to be within reason.
Well, I think that for me, this is me speaking, this commissioner, for me to vote for this today, I'm gonna have to have this worked out before I'm gonna vote for this today. I didn't, this is not what, I didn't come up with this today, but I didn't feel like it was fair, but I didn't feel like it would, that I should be reaching out to you ahead of this meeting and talking to you about this concern. And so, would you be open if the commissioners to, if it's not completed within eight years?
Hundred percent, yes, sir. I think it's already written in there that I have a certain twelve months is what's planned without getting an extension. So, yeah, something like that is easy for me to agree to, yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Does any other commissioners have questions?
I do, Mr. Harv.
Commissioner Harvey, your button's not working.
No, thank you. I've heard a lot of stuff here today and articulate and accusations and access to trails and from people who are accessing trails and, you know, this is, this is difficult on its own. But a PUD is for unique circumstances. And I think they're one of our best tools that we currently have in our toolbox to help everybody involved. And I think it's something that the county uses to the benefit. And I do have problems going against our planning staff who have invested all this time and effort into looking at all the problems. But I do wanna touch on live music. And again, I guess we're gonna, I don't wanna act like I'm negotiating, but maybe the quiet hours could be the live music hours if we rolled that back a little bit. I'm with Commissioner Turner, by eight-thirty, nine o'clock, I'm trying to find bed somewhere, I'm going to sleep, but I get up at three-thirty and four o'clock in the morning. And, you know, so for me to fire up the chainsaw before seven, I try to be respectful, but I'm ready to go at six if I could, you know? So, is there a possibility of live music and what could we do about that?
Yes, sir. I'm more than happy to limit any kind of amplified sound, live music to an earlier time, like would nine-thirty be acceptable?
Okay.
Again, I don't wanna negotiate with Commissioner Turner, that would be something that you would make concessions to, you've heard some.
Yes, yes, sir. I totally understand. I just wanna ease people's minds, there's not gonna be live music going on out here every single night or every single weekend, that's not, I am a family-friendly place and so I have the same concerns in place, but I'm more than happy to make that earlier.
So, for clarification, are you offering to limit live music to hours before what time?
Outside amplified sound, which would be anything that would bother the neighbors, outside amplified sound, no later than nine-thirty or if that's acceptable.
Okay. I think that's more than acceptable for me. And then you did agree to the eight years to be completed or it reverts, sunsets to, back to the original zoning, okay? Do you wanna add something, Zach?
Yes, Chairman, if I may. So, section two-point-two-point-three commencement and completion dates, the applicant has indicated all development activities associated with the Bristol Oaks planned unit development will be completed by December thirty-one, twenty-thirty. I'm, if it's okay with the applicant, we could just stick that reversion clause in an additional sentence, otherwise if not completed by such date, it would revert back to ag zoning.
Does that suit you?
Yes, sir. Can I ask one more question about that, though? I don't intend on building out to all twenty-five glamping sites and twenty primitive camping and seventy RV sites, so as long as we're not putting a number to that, I'll be complete prior to that. So, I just would like that to ensure.
She's trying to make sure that if she doesn't.
Go seventy RV sites.
She doesn't put all of the allocated sites in, she just decides not to increase her intensity or density that great, would she, could she still get a completed PUD?
It's still, it's completed.
I think my office would consider it completed if it has commenced and it is an open facility for folks to come and stay. The DRC's been done, building permits have been issued, and the development is existing.
Okay.
Thank you, Zach.
Does anybody have any questions, the staff or the Commissioner Wilkinson?
Zach, I just wanna understand, under unified control, I know that we talked about that we don't enforce deed restrictions, but under unified control, it says that the applicant, "All land included in any PUD shall be under the complete unified legal, otherwise encumbered control of the applicant."
But I don't know even.
So, because she has a deed restriction, does she have a unified legal, complete control of the property?
She does. I mean, that's really a title issue to the property, making sure that you don't have multiple property owners on an application to change the zoning for a PUD, the deed restriction doesn't affect unified control.
Okay, that's what I was asking, thank you.
Okay. At this point, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash seventeen, amending Putnam County zoning map and ordinance of Putnam County, Florida, amending the Putnam County zoning map for certain parts of land for agricultural ag to planned unit development, PUD providing for severability and providing for an effective date, PUD twenty-three dash Because staff recommends consistent approval of the application and finds a proposed rezoning from ag to PUD is consistent with the goals, objective, and policies of the adopted comp plan, is allowed to adopt future land use categories, not anticipate adversely effect, the order of development of the adjacent and surrounding properties, as the property is subject to development standards of the land development codes and meets the location requirements within the PUD zoning district provided by NDLDC and the comprehensive plan with the waivers that were presented today and the quiet hours from nine-thirty PM Sunday through Thursday, eleven PM Friday through Saturday, and note earlier than seven AM, live music stopping at nine-thirty PM. And if the project isn't completed, it reverts back after eight years back to ag zoning.
So, I just wanna clarify a couple of those things.
Wait a minute, let's clarify them in a moment. We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? I'm gonna pass the gavel to Commissioner Wilkinson and I'll second the motion. It's your meeting now, ma'am.
Nothing like putting me on the spot, huh?
Now, may I clarify some?
Yes, please.
So, Madam Chair, sitting in place for Commissioner Turner, I wanna clarify the quiet hours. So, would the nine-thirty quiet hours be in general for the entire park, or would that be for only live music events?
My motion was nine-thirty for quiet hours for the entire park and nine-thirty for live music in the park.
And nine-thirty for live music even on a Friday or Saturday?
I said eleven PM on Friday and Saturday.
For the park.
For the quiet hours, not for the amplified music, that's nine-thirty every day.
Every day, okay, gotcha. And the, also, your motion indicated for eight years, however, the one that's existing right now is twenty-third, December thirty-one, twenty-thirty, which would be seven years. We wanna keep the date or change it to eight years from date of adoption?
I'm gonna stick with eight years.
Eight years from date of adoption.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're open for discussion. Mr. Commissioner Adams, Zach?
So, even with the time change, I think it should be a little more aggressive earlier, but I'd like for us Chairmanwoman to go through and say whether we had communications or not, because we haven't done that yet.
Okay, all right. Start with you.
I have had communications with both sides of this issue throughout its first coming before us and continually via email, direct discussion, as well as in-person meetings. before us, and continually via email, direct discussion, as well as in-person meetings. And it will not affect my vote.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, I have had many conversations, emails, onsite visits, but it will not affect my decision for, to make a, to make a vote.
Commissioner Turner?
I've had many ex parte communications on both sides of the issue, but it will not affect my decision.
Mr. Pickens?
I have had many conversations, definitely emails, met with Ms. Ledford. So, I have that ex parte communication. It will not affect my decision.
Thank you. I've also met with the applicant, and had many conversations with landowners in the area, and on both sides of the issue, and it will not affect my decision. So, we have a motion and a second?
So, I still, now I would like to have my conversation.
Discussion.
For discussion, there's a few points that I would still like to make because of what the motion is. Under the hours, I think it would be more appropriate, given their extreme rural nature, that there is nothing out there. I drive by it regularly to go coach soccer. I think from Sunday to Thursday, I think the way that they had it, seven-thirty, I think would make more sense to me, and eight-thirty would make more sense on the weekends.
For live, for live amplified music.
For live amplified music, because we're not trying to create a concert venue here. We're trying to create something where they could have, you know, I think of places I've gone to that are farms and stuff, that have live music and that are agriculture nature, those things usually happen between eleven AM and three PM, that type thing, and then people come out, and then they go do whatever they're gonna do for dinner or whatever after.
Commissioner, I believe that she's shaking her head, yes, no problem, seven-thirty and nine-thirty on the weekends for amplified music.
So, I guess for the, you guys would have to amend your motion for that. But let me add one more thing, is on the wording of the last section, the section that was added, as far as not quite ours, I apologize, for the coming into the property, it just says there will be one paved entrance for the hundred feet. I'd like any paved entrance off of one hundred to be paved. So, if you end up having four entrances, I think they all need to be paved, because I think it's, I just think that would have to happen.
She's saying no problem with that, too.
So, I guess would the, would you guys amend your motions to...
It would have been my second if Commissioner Harvey was amenable to amend his motion.
I believe we're still under discussion. Let us talk to Commissioner Pickens.
Okay, I, um...
You did have your button, Lynn, right?
It doesn't work, so I was wanting to speak, so.
Commissioner Pickens, if I can interrupt for just a second, I know that the motion was amended. I just want to, I'm trying to keep up with everybody. What was the point for the accesses, the paved accesses?
That any access to one hundred is paved, or a hundred, same requirement, so they have five, I think, so they all should be paved.
And then also, just to clarify for, so the motion, or the revision to the motion was for live music to be limited to seven-thirty Sunday through Thursday, and nine-thirty Friday and Saturday, but it didn't change the overall quiet hours of the park, which was already set to nine-thirty Sunday through Thursday, and eleven Friday and Saturday.
That's right. Just live amplified music changed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Zach. I, I agree with limiting the, definitely the noise, because that was one of my biggest concerns. And also, I'm just gonna go ahead and open up with this, and I probably should have done it earlier, but we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second, so it's time for discussion. I'm not questioning that, that this meets all the PUD requirements, okay? And a PUD is developed to be able to have unique types of venues or whatever within a certain zoning district that probably would not be able to put in with a straight zoning, I believe is what they said. But also, sometimes I believe it's a way to shoe-horn something in that really doesn't belong there. And I just have, and Zach, if you can answer this, or somebody answered, I just don't see where that this, with the primary use, that it is consistent and compatible with the existing land uses in the area. I don't, I don't get that one. And we discussed it yesterday, right? I just don't, I don't see this.
So, within the staff report, the justification for its compatibility was that the future land use designation within the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan provides two provisions, allowances, if you will, for resource and activity-based recreation and rural recreation to locate in the ag future land use designation, so long as it doesn't accommodate more than, and forgive me, I don't know the percentage, it's either five or 10 percent. It's within the staff report, which this project will not accommodate more than five to 10 percent of land area of the ag future land use designation within this region of the park. Furthermore, the project, some of the ancillary uses within the development agreement do include agricultural elements. You'd have a butterfly garden, you'd have possible some livestock on site. So, that's kind of where the ancillary uses would also attribute to the agricultural future land use designation that is in place within the property.
And, Madam Chair, just to expand on that, keep in mind that staff is making a recommendation to you as the commission. The findings were actually the commission's findings. So, you can, you can ask questions, but your decision as to whether or not it's compatible, you can articulate why. That's really something that's the purview of the commission alone.
Explain that again. I didn't understand that.
Staff is giving you a recommendation, but the law says that the commission has to make the findings as to whether or not it's compatible with essentially your comprehensive plan, compatible with the surrounding zoning areas based upon the activity. So, I just want to be clear that it's not, whatever Zach's decision is, that's your, that decision rests with you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if he's done for a moment.
I was just making sure. Go ahead.
I understand that compatibility issues, I get it, but recreational, we have an explicit passage in that that says we can put recreational vehicles in, that recreational activities, what it would be a recreational activity other than a recreational park, recreational vehicle park. Nobody wants to stay in one of them downtown Palaca. They want to go out to something in the rural area, in the area where whatever. And I totally agree with you a hundred percent about the, about the live amplified music. I mean, that's been the one that's been the headache for the most of the ones that we've had before. I'm assuming we're both talking about the one down nearby you many warehouse, but, which was a real issue until we passed the noise ordinance, but I don't believe it's been one as bad in recent years since we passed that noise ordinance. So, I don't know. I just don't know where you'd put one of these unless it was on a nice piece of property out in the country, not downtown. Nobody wants to stay at a RV place downtown unless it's downtown Disney, and you're there to go to Disney. Other than that, you want to be in the country. So, I don't know. I feel your pain.
Do we have further discussion?
Madam Chairwoman, I need a little clarification on the amplified sound. So, Zach, could I, can I ask you to do that? It hasn't, we haven't amended my motion yet, but I'm...
Yeah, we have not amended the motion yet.
But I'm willing to listen to, again, I've tried to write it down.
Oh, yes. So, what I have, quiet hours in general would be nine-thirty PM Sunday through Thursday, and eleven PM on Friday and Saturday. And then, quiet hours for live amplified music would be seven-thirty PM Sunday through Thursday, and nine-thirty PM Friday and Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chairwoman, I would like to amend my motion to include the live amplified music, seven-thirty, stopping at seven-thirty PM Sunday through Thursday, and nine-thirty Friday and Saturday. And also, any paved entrances off of State Road one hundred be paved with it, with one hundred feet of the property line.
Commissioner Turner?
I'll amend my second.
For discussion, Commissioner Adams, Zach?
So, this whole thing is very perplexing to me. I live in the middle of the woods, literally. I do have, it's not an RV park, but I have two Christian camps within a half-mile, one directly across the lake behind me, and another one about two miles away. And we do hear amplified sound from them. They're playing music that I happen to enjoy, being a Christian, and they do limit it to seven-thirty, eight o'clock at night. Does it affect my life, though? That's, that's where I'm getting with all this when I listen to what people are saying. I don't know that it does or doesn't. I do recognize it's happening. This is a very hard one for me. I think there's, there's some areas that, I'm just perplexed on it. I just want to let everyone know that I'm perplexed, and even till the moment that I'm gonna vote, I'm probably be perplexed on it. I do appreciate the applicant's willingness to adjust the hours, to adjust the access, to do the things that we've asked of them. Just not sure where I'm at, and I just wanted the public to know that. So, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got, I just, I understand all the rules and the regulations. I truly do, and it met them. Guys, I just can't get there. I can't get there on this one. I'll just go ahead and tell you right now.
Call for the vote, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I was gonna ask for a roll call vote. District one, you want to do it? Go ahead.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Just announce that the motion, here, I can take it back at this point, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll reassume the chair at this point. The motion, the case failed and was denied three to two. Okay, so, we're going to go to, we're going to take a lunch break at this time, and then we're gonna hear the next case at twelve-thirty.